Like called meeting to order. Couple of things, if you notice on the agenda, this, every meeting now is going to be a school board meeting, so that we don't have a special meeting, so that we can add things to the agenda without going through the special meeting rules. But then it'll say the purpose, and today's purpose is a study session. So for those meetings, we will try to limit the agenda items to study sessions, and we have a couple of those today. So I need approval of today's agenda. Motion for that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post same sign, motion passes. Alright, first on the list, curriculum and instruction, item 3.1, presentation on the high school planning for 2015-16, and overview of a January term concept, Mr. Gross, close, Mr. Halverson, welcome.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members. Jeff and myself are here to talk about an exciting concept that we'd like to propose for the, actually I have to turn the microphone, for the 2015-16 school year. It's something that we saw in August, with both of us coming on board in August, there's a lot going on, but as we've had time to sit back and look at things at the high school, we think we have an opportunity to help students achieve at a higher level. So, tonight's a presentation, we took some members of our staff to Northfield, which you'll hear about during the presentation, to look at what they're doing, what did they do to get some drastic changes with their ninth graders. We're looking at eighth and ninth grade model, they do a ninth grade model, so. The goal here is to support the growth towards graduation. There's been a lot of, talked about graduation numbers, and it's across Minnesota, everybody's looking at, how do you increase student graduation numbers? And so that's what we're looking at quickly here tonight. How do we help those students become able to graduate in four years? That's the goal. This is some numbers of what we're looking at this year for numbers of students at the high school, and then next year you'll see there's a increase of about 50 students coming. It's pretty straightforward, right now, we have a pathway of one for eighth, ninth, and 10th graders, and we have a traditional and a CIS pathway right now for our 11th and 12th graders. So that's, that's the reality of what Albert Lee High School looks like right now. One of the issues we look at is, why are we having a large number of eighth and ninth graders unsuccessful in our high school? What's going on? What's the cause of this? How can we help them so that they're prepared to be successful in 10th, 11th, and 12th grade? And what does that look like? And so, so those are some of the things we're going to look at tonight. One of the other things that you'll see is, we're looking at adding an advanced level. So if you're an eighth or ninth grader right now, there's one system. We're looking at proposing, what do we do to help the students that are struggling? And then what are we doing for those students that sit in class, that are doing what they can, but they need some enrichment? They need to be challenged, and so that's what we're looking at tonight, so, in our presentation. At any point, please slow me down, so. Here are the numbers, the statistics of what's happening with our eighth grade failures. This has been put together, the numbers were pulled by both Jeff and Kathy Niebor, pulled these numbers for me, and so it kind of shows you what's happening. Right now, the big thing I hear with the eighth graders, there's no incentive. There's not incentive to do well. I mean, there's some students that are driven, their parents support them in there, but a lot of students are like, well, it doesn't count until I get to ninth grade. So I think that's a little bit of this apathy in the grades, so. Here's our ninth grade numbers. And the way I look at the failure issue is, this means that student, one, isn't being successful, and two, how do we help them in remediation? What does that look like? And, over 20 years of being a teacher in administration, summer school just doesn't match what we need, you know, it's good for kids, it meets the needs, but why are we, I always ask kids, why do you want to do something that you didn't enjoy the first time? And, I worked with the school district, they did social promotion, that was the worst thing that could ever happen to kids, because it never helps them. So, how do we get them before this point to help them?
You mentioned social promotion.
Oh, so when I was working at the conservatory the last six years, we had kids from 30-some different school districts. St. Paul Public Schools does social promotion, 7th and 8th grade, which basically means, the kids, if they come every day of school, basically, and they do summer school, and they jump through all the hoops, they put them to the next grade. So when they'd get to the conservatory and we're ninth graders, we wonder why they couldn't read, do their math, science, and all of a sudden, there's this, well, how did you do in middle school or junior high? Well, I did everything they asked me to, and now help fix it. And, you know, we can help students at ninth grade, but a lot of the things that we're working on at the elementaries right now, is what's really going to help those kids, so.
One thing that I noticed when looking at this information, as far as the numbers go, we look at the number of students that are receiving these Fs, and then we look at the actual Fs, and so, you look at it, and you've got multiple Fs for many of these students. And, when the ninth grade, you know, hits, obviously that's part of that four-year graduation plan, or at least that diploma includes that ninth grade year. And so we have a lot of students right now, who are experiencing not one, two, possibly three failures throughout that experience, and, as a 14, 15-year-old student, that's a, it can be kind of a heavy burden. And so, that was what really impressed us with what Northfield has put together, is that they're able to provide supports and structures for these students, so that that burden is matched with supports and structures, so that they don't result in an F for a semester or a quarter grade, and that they can move on, on schedule, on pace, to graduate. And we've got some data, we'll show you what they've experienced here shortly.
So, this is the system we have right now. Basically, we have students come to the high school, and they're in what we'll call the traditional track. Now, there are supports for students, there are students that have 504s or IAPs that are provided additional support, either in the mainstream or outside of it. But basically, you could be a student that was doing A-plus work, or A-work at Southwest, and you could be a student doing a D-minus work, based on your ability, and you're all grouped in the same classroom right now. And so that's what our reality is of right now. This information came from Northfield High School. It shows what has happened in the past, and it's pretty straightforward, nearly eighty, or eighty, 28% of their ninth graders failed a class. Shows the absence, and we've been working on that with our policy, new policy at the high school. And then discipline referrals, and then the reading score, and I can emphasize, over my career, that's probably the biggest hang-up for most students, is how they're doing in reading. And so that's why I'm a big supporter of, you know, having them ready by third grade with reading, because, you know, you can't do the other subjects, you can't do the math, you can't do the science, can't do social studies well, strong reading, so. It just seems to be a pitfall for students, if they're behind in their reading, they can't, they keep falling behind. And so their peers advance, and they just stay there, or go further behind.
Something that I encourage you to consider, as you're looking at this information, in terms of these numbers on the screen right now, is that they're all, it's a bit of a cycle. If I'm not doing well in class, I'm less motivated to want to go to school, if I'm not experiencing that success, if I feel that I'm not receiving assistance, or supports that I might need, I might become a little bitter, or possibly, you know, get into a situation where the frustration kicks in, the discipline referrals increase. And so, it's all interrelated, which, you know, many of us know, but it just really puts it out there when we look at a screen like this, at, you know, it is all interconnected. And so they've created some structures and supports, so that the academics, the behaviors, they're all tied in, and, you know, in essence, the entire, with that harbor rising, all bolts go with it, shall we say.
So this shows the data over the years since they started the academy, you can see a drastic change. What I would say, if you're, as we're looking at the academy, it reminds me of a lot of the middle school model, with the supports there. Why is that South St. Paul, they didn't call it middle school, they called it junior high, just to save money on training, I think? But the concept of, you have core teachers working with students that know everything that's going on with those students. You know how they're doing the math, you know how they're doing science, social studies, there's people together. You can pull together and find out what the cause is, what's going on. Sometimes we don't know everything going on, you know? One teacher might hear, but do you really communicate what's going on with that student? Could be illness in the family, could be family situations such as separation, divorce, those type of things. Whereas, what I'm used to calling a core, we'd have four teachers, and we all knew what was going on with Johnny, and we could pull Johnny in, Johnny's parents, and find out how we could help. And usually Johnny or Suzie are struggling in all their courses. And so it's a way of finding these things out, and if, as we go on and look at Northfield High School, you'll see, those are some of the similar things, but, I mean, a drastic change in what's happening there. Here's some information on what happens, and it's a little hard to see here, and we can get you copies of this. The goal is, is how are students being successful after the academy? What happens afterwards? How do they work with the traditional system that they have? Right now, Northfield has a traditional system, AP and a little CIS on the edge. And so how are these students being successful as they go into 10th, 11th, and 12th grade? And it shows you the percentages there of their success. And so I think, once again, they're given the tools, so that they can be successful at the high school level. What are we preparing them for, so that they can be successful?
Yes, yes, just to clarify, basically this is a snapshot taken in the 2012-2013 school year, after the completion of the first semester. So, the, well, let's just say January of 2013, as an example. At that time, they looked at their current 12th graders, their current 11th, their current 10th graders, who all took part in the academy. And what they're showing is, these are students who are showing credit completion, or passing English, Science, and Social Studies, which are the three core areas which are focused on in the academy. My apologies for those English numbers going left to right, we have 94, 97, and 100% left to right there on the English scores. So, you can see that, not only is it something that, you know, we're just giving them a fish, and they're fed for the day, but rather, we're teaching them how to fish, and they're, you know, in essence, fed throughout their school years, here, at the high school level, anyway.
So 100% passed all of their classes?
Yeah, so for example, if I'm in, if a 12th grader was in the academy, and we look at English, 100% of the students that were in the academy passed English, Science, and then 98% of them passed Social Studies in their 12th grade year.
So this is what we're proposing for the 2015-16 school year for our eighth and ninth graders. The traditional at the top is what we're used to here. And then we'd have the academy for those students that have struggles, and we'll get into specifics, how we determine what the struggles are, and then we'd have an advanced pathway also for the students. So we go to three pathways for our eighth and ninth graders, moving forward. Pretty straightforward, the academy's going to use students' grades, we're going to look at some assessment history, and then teacher recommendation for students that might need this extra support. The traditional's pretty straightforward, and then the advanced, once again, we'll look at what are their scores, grade-wise assessment and teacher recommendations, so that we have students in the right area. The big thing with the advanced is upping the rigor. All three of these areas will use the same standards. The standards aren't being watered down for the academy, they're not going crazy at the advanced level. The standards across the board, English, Science, Social Studies are all the same. It's what support are you giving, and what are you doing for enrichment at the advanced level? And so, a student, you know, at the academy level will be covering the same concepts as you would see at the advanced level. It'll just be the depth of that coverage. As Jeff mentioned, there's three required courses, English, Science, and Social Studies, and then a seminar course. The reason math is not included in the academy is math is based on students' ability already, so they're already put in a pathway based on what they can do. And so, one of the things that the seminar does, is it provides students with support. And it's looking at, how are you doing in science? How are you doing in social studies? How are you doing in English? And also, having people there keeping an eye on how things are going, so. As I kind of mentioned, here's the courses they'd be taking, in their academy. So, English, Science, Social Studies, and the seminar course. And the seminar courses, I think, just as valuable, if not a little bit more important than the other three, even though I'm a former social studies teacher, so.
At the workshop that we attended, that was hosted by the Northfield High School folks, the seminar course was kind of broken down and explained in a little more detail. And oftentimes, what happens at that transition level of eighth, ninth grade is their executive skills, and their executive skill functioning is not as strong as their classmates, who aren't experiencing as many difficulties. And that seminar class is an opportunity to kind of strengthen some of those executive functioning skills. What is an executive functioning skill? It's kind of like, basically decision-making, you know, how to be a student, what does a constructive use of time look like, how does time management work? And then what Northfield has done, and we're looking at some of their models for replication, each day of the seminar represents something unique, specific to where they're at. So I just pulled up their sheet here, for example, Monday would be focusing on a reading skill of some kind. Tuesday, looking at some type of current events, Wednesday would be a study skill, Thursday, a science article, as an example, and Friday would be the writers workshop. And it's all kind of tailored around the needs that would enhance kind of what they're currently taking for their coursework. Additionally, it'd be time for them to circle the wagon with the students who might be struggling with getting some homework turned in, or maybe there's a makeup test to be taken, or something like that, and there would be an opportunity for them to take that, get that completed during school. So there's some flexibility, yet there's some structure to it.
The teachers involved in this, the teaching the Science, English, and Social Studies are part of the seminar course, too, so it's not just a separate teacher that's over here, I'm teaching the standalone class, they're actually working with four individuals, so that, as Jeff mentioned, students can get those extra supports they need. There's people keeping an eye on how grades are going, how testing's going, different things like that. Sorry about the size on this. One of the things is, what does their schedule look like? One of the things with the academy, I'll be straightforward, is they lose one elective. But, I believe that the seminar will outweigh that one elective at eighth and ninth grade. It won't affect their graduation with ninth graders, except it'll help them graduate. It won't, they won't have trouble picking up the electives they need. So it just kind of gives you a day-by-day, every day, there's going to be a meeting with the teachers in the morning, talking about what's going on today in the academy, who are the students that we need to touch base with, where are we going with our seminar class? And then they're, they're in their English, Science, and Social Studies. And so, they're right there, seminar takes place, and then they have their elective or math. And so, and I think, like I said, I believe the seminar class is well worth the other elective that they might not take at this point. Because, one, it will help them prepare for ninth and 10th grade and on, and they'll be able to pick up those electives, because as our student council members know, there's a lot of space in their schedules, they move forward sometimes for electives, so that's not a detriment at the eighth and ninth grade level. 10th graders, we're also proposing adding a pathway, and this is the advanced pathway. So this would be advanced English 10, advanced American government, advanced this, advanced that. So that students have that opportunity, that are highly skilled, and have the ability, and want to be pushed to have that option. Once again, we'll look at, what are some of the things, such as grades, test scores, recommendations, so students can be successful at this level. New one for next year, that I can see someone smiling at, we're looking at adding French to our foreign languages. I was very surprised, when I got here, that Albert Lee offers one foreign language. And so, did some digging, talked to my friends in the Big Nine. Here are the levels and the different foreign languages offered at the other Big Nine high schools. Now granted, some of them are very mega high schools, so there's some flexibility of adding. When you have 2,000 to 3,000 kids in a high school, you can add some of those things. So we are looking at having Spanish and French moving forward, starting with the 15-16 school year. And so, I think some of them, like Fairbolt, Mankato, Red Wing, the tradition of German is hanging on there, but I think if you look at a lot of the schools across the United States, even though 100% German background of mine, my grandmother be horrible that I can't speak anymore, it's not a course that kids are using to, generally, to go on at other levels. CIS, AP, as some of you know, I come from a background that has CIS, AP, and International Baccalaureate. So, I'm not an expert, but I have a lot of touching and feeling and participating in these. Here is what Albert Lee High School offers in the CIS course through Riverland. And so you can see what we offer for English, Humanities in English for 12th grade, writing college papers, pre-calculus, calculus, Humanities, Social Studies, Government, Biology, and then a couple in the business area, Intro and Word.
One piece that did not make the slide is the nursing assistant class and the firefighter class. We've had some very satisfied students in those classes this year. I just spoke with Riverland this afternoon, and we have got 12 students that have completed their firefighter one course this first semester. I'm told seven of them chose to take the state certification test, and those results are not back yet. Of the 12 students who finished, or took the course first semester, all 12 have chosen to take the Semester Two course, which is a hazardous materials operations class, and a firefighter two class. So, for those that choose to go to that next step, they would be eligible to take the firefighter two certification test this spring. Additionally, we had one semester of nursing assistant class, certified nursing assistant class, this fall, as kind of a trial, and we had, I want to say 13 students that finished that. And, I don't have the numbers on me right now, in terms of how many of those students chose to go on to get their certification, but I believe it was around eight or nine that ended up passing and receiving that certification, so. I know of one student in particular, who is looking to begin working immediately as a nursing assistant upon completing that. So, and that course wrapped up in November. So, we will be having the firefighter courses and the nursing assistant class in the registration manual for the next year as well.
I don't know if Jeff and I are talking about the same young lady, but I know one of our students is working at Oak Park Place, and they're very happy with her and her work performance, and so we've worked with her on helping her enhance that opportunity, so. For 2015-2016, we're looking at adding micro and macroeconomics and psychology. And so students would take these courses, they would have the opportunity at the end of the, in May, to take the AP test. If they score three or higher out of five, that would help them with their college getting credit. I, at the conservatory last year, we did calculus and physics for the first time. We didn't offer an AP class, but I know the students appreciated the opportunity to take that, and I think, oh, the physics, there were six kids, it took in, three of them scored, three or better, and then at the other end, it was about 10 kids, and I think nine out of the 10 scored, so. So this is just another opportunity to offer rigor at the high school, give kids an opportunity to see something that would be very similar, what they take at the college level, especially if they're looking at going towards that four-year rigorous college, this AP will provide them that experience for that, and so.
Just a question on, just why are you just going to three of them? I mean, do you want to not infringe on some of the CIS, or what are your thoughts on that?
Well, one is not to have duplicate courses right now. So, with the CIS and AP, we could have back-to-back AP/CIS, and that can be interesting, to try to run those simultaneously. Also looking at, down the road, of adding more AP classes, this is just the beginning. I'm kind of getting ourselves, as you can see, we're looking at making a lot of changes in 2015-2016, so instead of going after everything at one time, how do we start out, and how do we enhance what we have? And then look at adding more offerings in AP as time goes on. Now, students can always take the AP test, so if a student thought that they were skilled enough in like, US government, and wanted to take the AP test, that's available. A student doesn't have to take AP courses to take the test, but the courses help them be more successful. That's why last year, when I was at the conservatory, we had it taught as an AP course. One of the things that is interesting is AP, just like the International Baccalaureate test in mid-May, earlier than the 15th usually. So the teachers really have to ramp up what they're doing in September or before. I had the privilege of, a little bit before September starting, so those teachers knew we need to get this stuff going, because they have to be ready for the test. And so, it's a stressful time, but most of the students were very appreciative to have that opportunity. Questions for either myself or Jeff?
I had a couple of questions. So how many students would be in the academy that you foresee?
We would look at, and we don't have the data right now, but we'd make sure that there was no more than 75 students in the entire academy. We try to keep class sizes small, in that 20 to 23, if possible, so that we can give them the attention that they really need to build up those executive skills, so that they can be successful. Per grade, yeah, yeah.
So like 75 per grade?
75 kids in the eighth grade, yep, 75 in the ninth grade.
And then how about, would parents be able to, I just, hearing through forums that we had regarding the calendar, I don't know if the rest of the board members heard, but I heard from a number of parents whose kids are kind of, I'm going to call it, in the middle, who are maybe struggling in one or two classes, but not overwhelmingly the majority of their classes. Would parents be able to say, I'd like my student in the academy? And maybe the methods that you were talking about with assessment, teacher recommendation, they maybe wouldn't have been suggested for academy?
We'd have to look at the number of students, the date in that area. One of the things is, we hope that by having students in the academy, they're getting support, that doesn't mean that the traditional track, or the advanced track, wouldn't also be doing some of those similar things. For example, Socratic notes is one of the things that Northfield does with all their students. And so, those supports are there. I think what you would see in the classes, instead of a teacher trying to meet all the needs across the board, from the, you know, future Rhodes Scholar to the student that struggles, instead of trying to differentiate for all those students, it's a smaller group, so they can give them more support. I think what you'll see is, you'll see grades and the rigor go up in all three pathways. I don't think it's a, oh, this group's the only group getting help. I think you're helping, you know, allowing the teacher to concentrate more on where the kids are right now. So you don't have five kids over here that really need a lot of attention, but then those five kids are bored that are over here and saying, okay, what do I do next? Well, read a book, type of thing, so.
When it comes to the AP classes, are the teachers in place, or would we use Riverland professors, or how would that work?
Last year, the teachers were sent to AP training, so they're ready to go. And, the French, we have a French, a licensed teacher on staff that can teach French, so I think we'll probably be looking for another French teacher. If I look at what I've seen in the past, kids are very excited about taking French, and so it might hurt Spanish for a little bit, but there'll be a growth pretty quick. I mean, once again, at the conservatory, we went from having Spanish, and then we added French, and we said, oh, we'll only have one section of French for 600 kids, and we went up to three sections the first year, just because there is that interest in that language.
I'm happy to hear that you're considering French, starting in addition to Spanish. I was just thinking about the, so the three, the academy, the traditional, and then the advanced kind of pathways. Right now, we have grade weighting, as far as, is it AP courses that grades are weighted?
CIS.
CIS. And, would there be any consideration for the kids? And would there be any consideration for the kids that take that advanced track, or is it kind of more at a risk if they're really concerned about their grade point, that they might not take advantage of that if it's offered?
I, I think the, the idea of having the weighted grades is probably better for our AP and CIS courses. I've worked in a school system that had honors weighting, and it just creates a lot of issues. I think it's getting students prepared so they can be successful in those courses. One thing I'll be looking at with staff is the whole concept of weighting, what does that look like? I started getting some statistics from the other big nine schools, I started going after some of those schools that everybody measures themselves against so that we're accurate. I will tell you, I have a number of friends that do recruiting for the private colleges in Minnesota, and they, they just totally tear apart those, the GPAs, because they know they're all over the place, you know? Some schools, very high bumps, and others not as high, and so actually, some schools have weighted and weighted grades right next to each other, so. But it's something we'll be looking at in the future.
Okay. And is there any possibility for an engineering class in the CIS offerings?
Right now, we do have that engineering course offered through Project Lead the Way, that students can pay the hundred dollar fee at the end of the semester, and they can get the CIS credit for that. So that, that is available for those students. And I know Casey McIntyre met with that whole group about a month ago, talking about how do we keep adding rigor to that, and brought in the business people from Albert Lee to talk about that.
I just had one other comment, and this is not just about the academy, which I think is very exciting and sounds like a great concept, but I'm a parent with a daughter in college right now, and she took lots of CIS classes and graduated with forty-two college credits, and she has told me over and over and over, wow, was I not prepared with study skills when I started college. So if there's any way we can look at a study skills course for all eighth and ninth graders, you know, that would just be a general comment I have. I think that's really an area that kids going on to post-secondary of any kind are finding they really don't have the study skills, not taking all of that, and are struggling.
Yeah, that's always a concern. How do we best prepare our students for life after high school? I had some time, or an opportunity for that matter, last year after the first semester break to meet with students that are Albert Lee graduates who have gone on to that next level, and one of the themes that came out in those interviews, and these interviews took place typically in a setting of one or two students, with Kathy Nibor and myself interviewing them, is they weren't, they didn't feel confident as they started their freshman or their ninth, or how am I doing, their first year of college, in terms of the strength of the material that was being presented to them. And they would say that, again, this is their impression, that they felt that their roommates or peers, for whatever reason, was, were possibly a little bit more prepared to experience some of these challenges. So when I, I hear the, I hear what you're saying about the study skills component, and that's part of that executive functioning skills that we're talking about, but I, I think also a component of that is the, the actual strength of the material that they're facing, and not fully understanding that, you know, what it takes to really get after it in an academic sense. Another interesting note is, I would say ninety percent of the students, maybe more than that, that were interviewed, left Albert Lee High School with a GPA north of a four-point oh. I mean, they, many of them had a pristine academic record, and still would say that they didn't have that level of confidence, and they just didn't feel it within themselves, you know? They were, they were doing okay, they would say, but they just felt that their classmates at the college level may have had a better preparation than they did. So yes, study skills and, and strength of materials, definitely areas that we are always monitoring and looking at, how can we make that better?
Quinn or Gabriel, do you guys have any comments?
For the CIS classes, I know that we only have one CIS class for chem, for biology, which is the science, and even I'm going to college for chemistry, and I had no opportunity to take an actual college chemistry course that I could be prepared, prepared for my degree. And I would like, I would like to see actually more like science-based and, as well as the social and English, because for a lot of my friends who are going to science, we don't know if we're actually prepared just to go leap into science, because we felt like even ninth grade year, we didn't have the physical science for, that we needed for chemistry, so our chemistry teacher had to reteach what there was, what we were supposed to learn in ninth grade.
Um, okay, so, yeah, I agree with Gabe. I want to be a dermatologist, and we're both in AP Biology together, but I feel like, yeah, he said maybe some more science classes. Overall, I think there's a lot of options. I think I'm taking five college classes this year, so I feel like my plate's pretty full as it is, but I think maybe next year, you know, some of like the extracur, like, yes, there's humanities, social, there's AP Gov, but maybe like an AP Chemistry or something like that, because the sciences kind of lack in the upper grades, so.
Any other comments?
I also have a comment, I also have a comment with the studying. My AP government teacher, Mr. Haney, even said that he gives us readings, but if we choose not to read it, it's our own fault, and that he gets emails back from students saying we should read more, and he has said, I told you to read, but you chose not to read it. So your studying skills actually depend on the actual person itself, not just the school that we have. Even our, my humanities, English class, I have to study, and I never studied before in my life, and I'm learning how to study as a senior, and it's super hard. So I think if we, it's not just the school, but the student itself has to be prepared to study.
Other comments? Questions? Mike?
Just one important thing to bring up, as you are looking at developing these pathways, and you've seen the board's Pathways to Success document, I think a real key part of this is how you're going to introduce this to families, how you're going to sit down with parents, how you're going to have that conversation with staff members, parents, and students on, we think this is the best pathway for you, and what, and receive the parent input and hear what they have to say. So, so I'd really encourage you to think about the process of implementing that with, with our families.
Once we gather the data, grades, and recommendations, then we can have those meetings with parents. We'll definitely have a meeting with parents, looking at the academy, because this is going to be a whole new concept. What does this involve? How does it work? So we'll definitely need to have a meeting at the high school so that they can understand what their student is getting involved in, why we're asking their student to be involved in this. This isn't a, oh, we're punishing you, we're trying to help you be successful so that, you know, we see you at graduation being successful, and we get closer to that ninety percent in the next couple of years, which is a target of the board of ninety percent, so.
Question regarding that. So when you, you're talking to these parents and students about being in this academy, do they have the option to actually opt out of it, to say, okay, this sounds good, but not for my kid, kind of a thing? How is that going to be handled?
Well, I think, of course, we give the parents the choice on that. I think I would really show them the data, the recommendations of the teachers. Your child or your student is not being successful, give us an opportunity to show you what we can do to help your child. Many of the parents I talked to, it, it's not, this is the first time they've struggled. They struggle at Southwest, not, not that Southwest isn't doing a great job, but they've struggled, and they've struggled all along, and so here we're giving them some support so they can be successful. A lot of the parents come to us like, we don't know what to do. You know, some parents will say, I wasn't a good student, or I don't know the strategies, I'm not a teacher, how can you help me? So I think it's informing the parents of what's involved in this seminar course, what's involved, what's this look like, and then really encourage them to give it an opportunity to see that their student will see success, and there is some support there.
Just to tag Damian a little bit off of what Julie had mentioned before, it'd be a great idea, and I know as a program just starts out, if it does go through, I would sure like to see the opportunity for some parents to be able to apply for their children to be part of the academy, if we're lower in numbers, let's say fifty, and we could take up to maybe seventy. I think it'd be a great thing. Study habits, maybe, if nothing more than that, as they start out in eighth grade.
So, you know, after our calendar discussions, we had a lot of what next? So this, to me, is one of the things that's what next. So I, I thank you very much for the diligence and time you put into a program that, from my viewpoint, benefits all of our students, and has been well thought out. And so I have two questions. One is for you two, what do you need from us? And then for the board, what do we need to hear before we move this forward? And so I'll just open that up for discussion.
Should I be serious, or should I be humorous? And that's what I need. What we need is your support. We have taken six staff members, Northfield with us, and then the two of us, and then we just happened to get postcard today explaining that they're going to do some in June, like three or four more opportunities so we could bring more teachers. I think teachers are going to be excited about this. I think you're going to have teachers across the board, not only the ones in the academy, but the traditional track and the advanced, excited about opportunities, working with groups of students to help them be successful. So I think, you know, we'll probably talk with Dr. Funk, Lori Vols, of course, because she holds the purse strings, and then probably Mary, and talk about some things that we might need. One of the things we looked at is after-school, some tutoring. We think we can use the Target Services buses to move kids around, so students that are struggling in the academy, we could, you know, get them some after-school tutoring, so that's available. I'm not going to say, as the Northfield people said, there's zero, it's a zero cost here. There, there's going to be some tweaking. First year's always a challenge, just as we've seen this year as we implement new things, but I don't think you're, just your support is mainly what we need, and then feedback that you hear from parents that might not be willing to contact us with that.
I already don't like this setup. From, from the board, what, if we wanted to put this as an action item in a couple of weeks, what else do you need to hear, see, have to vote on that?
Currently have all of the resources we need as far as space, if we're going to have some smaller class sizes, things like that.
Yeah, we'll be able to do this in the model we have. We might be a little bit more creative. We don't need expansions, just moving numbers around and where our students are, and Jeff did a wonderful job of scheduling before I got here, so I'm entrusting that he's going to be able to do another wonderful job and make this all work. I worked in a system where we had IB, and so we had to schedule IB and then schedule the rest, so you have to think about some of those parameters of specialized programs. How do you make sure that some of our advanced kids have those opportunities to get as many courses? But sometimes they can't get all of them, and that's a reality in life, no matter how big your high school is. If you're YZ with thirty-two hundred kids, or the future Shockbe High School with thirty-five hundred, even in those programs, they can't get every course to every kid. So once in a while, students and their parents will have to make some decisions on, I can't take this, and hopefully in the future, we can have more of a, okay, we're going to offer this this year, and those kind of work fits, so.
Other comments? So hearing none, I think we can plan that that'll be an agenda item for action next, in two weeks. Thank you. You want to move on to the J-term concept?
Thank you. Sure, I'm getting used to this thing, too. This comes from, a little bit from my background. Dr. Funk came to me and said, can you talk about J-term? What, what is this? What does it look like? I was privileged enough and lucky enough that my parents pushed going to college for me, and for some reason, I picked Gustavus Adolphus College, which is a fine university, but Bemidji was just as good, and St. Thomas has been also, just as good for me. But the MIC schools are here J-term, and, and the college system, J-term means no classes in January. Now, sometimes as a young freshman, you say, hey, I don't have to go to class in January, this is perfect, I can sleep in. But what they do is they offer intensive classes or experiences across the world, and so that's where the J-term concept comes from, is more of the college background. So I'll just go through and explain some basics tonight, try to answer your questions on this topic, as we look forward to, you know, is this something that would work in Albert Lee for a J-term? I'll also bring up a new concept that's happening at Edina this year, this year called May-term, and so they're, they're tweaking what they're doing in their program, too, so. What this gives you an opportunity, and as I said, last year at the conservatory, we had J-term, so it was thirteen days. It gives kids sometimes a hand-on experience or a more in-depth experience. So when I was at Gustavus, my background was European history, so I could really get into a course that, over a semester, you can't look at that time period. And so that's what we'd look at for students, is how do you either give them a different experience? So it might be something that's more of an elective type of course, or is it more an depth course in a certain area? For example, both our student, board members talked about science. Do we have an intensive science that they could get a quarter credit, a third of a credit, however, depending on the day and the length of it? How could we get those classes in there? Some places allow one, some take two. Edina's on blocks, so they have a four-period type of situation. The one big thing, it's either at the collegiate level or the non-traditional. When I talk non-traditional, one of the schools we looked at was University High School out of Carmel, Indiana. It's nineteen thousand dollars a year to go there, and so they're able to do some unique things because it's a private preparatory school. You really, when you look at this, this is like adding another semester, when you look at building schedules and staffing and things like that. When I was at the conservatory, they, I was just at a dance performance at O'Shaughnessy last Tuesday night, I think I was there. They already start scheduling who's coming in, what the courses are going to look like next year, and then the venues, and so it's a year in planning. They're not just something that you can go around and say, hold it, you like doing this, and you like doing this, and we're going to throw it out there and offer it. There has to be some thought behind it when you build these J-term projects. Usually two to three weeks. What I found in my past experiences, my students, because they were performing artists, weren't always excited about academics. This really propels students, I found myself, even at Gustavus, it gives you a little mmph for that second semester when spring comes, and it gives you that opportunity. Edina uses internships. Now, they do that with their seniors, and they'll look at implementing it with their tenth and eleventh graders, but it gives a student hands-on. I always think of accounting. I took accounting, probably didn't do as well as Mr. Halverson here, but I always think, geez, would I ever want to be an accountant? Where do I get that experience? How do I find out? I go to college, I spend lots of money, and I know Ms. Vols loves numbers and stuff, but how do you know that's what you really want to do? And you've spent a couple of years in college trying to figure that out. So that's a benefit of these opportunities. Like I mentioned, planning is at least a year. I know my friend Brian Goran, the artistic director at the conservatory, he's already thinking two, three years out of who, what, when, where, so you don't duplicate also. That's one thing, you don't want to continually offer the same courses, otherwise kids are like, oh, it's offered again. And so you got to be really creative, you got to have staff that really want to be passionate about the courses, and so. And sometimes, for example, Edina's using outside instructors, they're using community ed as a resource. So for example, you know, the different businesses in town, the Mayo system, you might have a anatomy course that's taught by a doctor from Mayo, and the way you work that in the state of Minnesota is they become a community expert. That's how you get the license so that the students get the credit for it. So, as I mentioned, the two schools that, the one I'm very familiar with is the conservatory, and then the other one that I was doing research on, and they're just implementing May-term for all tenth through twelfth grades, a tenth through twelfth grade high school, twenty-seven hundred kids roughly at Edina. They've been doing a senior May-term for ten years, but now they're opening it up to their tenth through, tenth and eleventh graders, a hundred and twenty courses they're offering right now. Now, that doesn't mean all a hundred and twenty courses are offered, and some of it's independent study. I didn't get a chance to talk to the principal or one of the APs at Edina when I was researching this, but they have to have somebody that's, all they do is try to coordinate this, because they're in a block four-period schedule, and every block has to be filled, and some of the offerings are one period or two periods. So as kids are trying to schedule this, you also, as the scheduler, have to try to make it all fit, and so there's some pros and cons to it. Conservatory, they're six hundred students, they have twenty- They have 22 offerings. They can't do auditions because it's a public high school. But for J-term, they can audition you for a class. So every student's placed in a class. They use 13 days. This year it was 12 due to the weather. But they bring in mostly outside instructors. They have a unique situation where during those 13 days, their academic teachers do staff development because there's no time during the regular schedule for staff development. And it's performance-based. Now, they add students that will do ballet, to singing opera, to set design, different things like that. So even though most of their students are there for performing arts, they look at what are other opportunities? Two years ago, we had a young lady that went and worked for the Ordway on some projects, so. And this one's kind of exciting. I want to dig more into Edina's May-term. So what they're doing is, they're on a block schedule, four-period day. As I mentioned, 120 courses. And the way both schools determine the credits is based on hours. So if you did 30 hours, so you did six hours, five days a week, you could get a semester credit, or half a semester credit, half a semester because semester's worth 60 hours. So those are type of things. Edina really focused on their 12th graders with their internships. It's a big, big, big project there of getting kids out. Now, the students write up the proposals, and they have to go in front of a review board and all that. So I'm assuming that there's many, many people beyond just the Edina high school staff that are making, helping out with this, so. General questions? If you go and Google, since that seems to be the way we search for everything these days, I would say about 95% of the schools are either a non-traditional charter school or a private school. Edina's really on the cutting edge of what a J-term or May-term. And you could look at it any time of the year. It doesn't, I mean, it just happens. Everybody copied what the colleges were doing is why J-term came up.
Are those days, like within the confines of a traditional calendar, those are days instead of regular instruction? Or they're added days, or?
They're in the regular calendar. So I know at Edina, they have their proposal, and they have to meet certain hours. And internships vary, but they have to put in so many hours documented. At the Conservatory, depending on what the level of activity, ballet was three hours on their feet a day, three to four hours a day with choreographing. And then there are some other things they had to do. But it was all hour-based in the traditional day between 8:00 and 3:00 o'clock.
Other questions? So I think we'd like to hear more detail at some point and maybe see a mock schedule, or what courses we would be able to offer, and what parts of January or May, and how that fits into the regular calendar.
Would the board be looking at seven days, 14? I mean, that's going to make a difference on, as we move forward?
We'll talk.
Okay. Just because different parameters and different things in what you're looking at. Ideas also are helpful. Are you looking for more of an academic-based, experience-based? Those will make a difference, and I know we'll talk, but.
Yeah, I think this is their first, this is their first opportunity to hear something like this. So I think that they're just taking it in at this point.
Other questions? Thank you very much for both your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay, item four, 4.1, discussion on a tax abatement for a new development. Dr. Funk?
Yep, the city has a developer moving in who wants to put in a 24-unit apartment complex. And this is for, it's not a low-income housing unit. It's actually a unit that individuals will be paying, they're one or two-bedroom units, and they'd be paying between $800 and I think $1,000 a month to develop. And they want to move forward fairly quickly here, I think in 2015. So tonight, I'm just showing you an abatement schedule because the developer is seeking tax abatement from the city, from the county, and from the school district to help them fund the project. So right now, it's on a piece of land somewhere within the community that we virtually get no money for taxes on, or very little dollars because it's just a piece of land. So the proposal moving forward that the city administration, the county administration, and myself as part of the school district have started to really look at is an 85% abatement for 10 years on that property. So basically, they wouldn't have to pay for 85% of the taxes on that property for the first 10 years. It'd help them get it built, help them get it off the ground. And so that is what the city council will be considering, and the county board will be considering as well. I am wholeheartedly supportive of this concept when I take a look at some of the challenges our teachers have with housing when they move to the community. We've had a number of stories where teachers have to live out of town because they just don't have quality rental housing available to them. So I believe the council will be considering this for approval sometime in the next couple of weeks. And I'd like to hear your thoughts. And then I'd like to put this on the agenda for approval in the board meeting in February as well.
I have a question. Do all three cities, county and school, all have to do the abatement? Or can the city do it and us, or how does that work?
Yeah, we can do different levels. So we could say, no, we want to do 75% for five years. But it's up to each entity to choose on their own. Good question.
Traditionally, what have we done in a situation like this?
Bill, you want to answer that? You've been on the board the longest.
We've had a number of these come forward over the years, and they've been primarily commercial-related. You know, the big rub on something like this would be, you know, are they going to be bringing in enough students where it's going to impact us from a fiscal sense? You know, I would say what this is geared towards is more the young professionals, young teachers. You know, I think it's going to be a minimal impact on the school district with regards to financial impact. But I think it's going to be a big boon for this community because we are, I would even consider 100% because of the issues we have in housing for, you know, housing of this type. We just don't have it. You know, trying to find something for somebody that's looking for, say, an executive style or even a mid-range, it's very few and far between in this community. This would be exciting to have.
And I assume it would be all three of the taxing bodies would do it, or none of us would do it?
The proposal is all three to do it. They can do what they want to do individually. But we're trying to tell the developer that, I think they're looking for a green light the month of February to go forward. And I think this is what, the bare minimum of what they need would be the 85/10.
And if we did 100%, which would be, we'd be forgiving essentially $60,000?
Correct.
Do you know what the count, the amount then that would be? What's 100% if the county did that, or the city?
Yeah. I can tell you, you have that, I can look it up. Hang on just a second.
Other comments or questions?
I believe I heard the last time an apartment building was built in this city was in the 80s. I think it's something like that. So I mean, this is something very exciting if this would be. I do know of teachers who have had to almost live in slummy kind of conditions because there is just no place to live in this town. So this is an exciting, like Bill said, very exciting.
Jill, Julie, comments, questions, concerns? She said she was supportive.
I am too, yeah. Definitely, working at the bank for the 12 years I was there, I frequently saw new customers coming into open accounts, and they were struggling to find quality housing, and in particular rental housing. So, yeah, this is a good thing.
So we'll put that on the agenda for two weeks. And at that time, then, Mike, we can just see the details of the city and the county.
Hang on just a second. It's opening up right here.
I'm very impatient.
All right, so here we go. The, if the city were to do an abatement at 85% for 10 years, it's $126,000. If the county were to do an abatement for 85% for 10 years, it's $99,000. So both a little bit more than the school district.
All right, thanks. Other comments? Lori, anything from the financial side? That amount of money spread over that many years? As far as being not negative?
Right. The thing about tax abatement is that we don't lose out on any school levy. So it is, the levy would be spread amongst remaining tax base. So as was mentioned, this development is on, probably not getting a lot of tax on it right now. So it's just a matter of how it's spread.
All right, so we'll add that to the agenda for two weeks. All right, item four, 4.2, development of social media guidelines. We spoke about this at the last meeting. You know, Jill and I attended a social media workshop at the MSBA, and I don't know if any of the others you did. But a couple of take-home points were, social media obviously is very important and a very good thing, but it can be used in a very negative way as well. And there are some First Amendment rights that apply to how students use it with regards to the school district. And so it's very hard to make a policy to limit its use. However, you can make guidelines that you require your student athletes or extracurricular activities to abide by, very similar to our drug and alcohol policy, where there's known consequences, and the parents and the students sign up for that. So we found a model example from Hayfield, that we'd passed around to the board. And in this case, instead of us coming up with a policy and we saying to the students, here it is, make it go, or make that work, what I'd like to do is ask that Gabriel and Quinn get a group together. And I don't think we'll call it a committee, we'll call it a task force because it has a beginning and an end. Committee means it would go on and on forever. So I think you two should chair it. I think you should include the athletic director. She, at this point, she'd be the one responsible for enforcing it. I think you should include Mr. Grossclose or one of, somebody that he appoints. I think you should get a couple of their students and some community members. And I have some ideas on who that might be. Work that through, bring back something that's appropriate for Albert Lee, and then we, the board can look at it. I think I would ask you not to have a board member on the committee because if a board member comes, then it's an open meeting. And your group of eight or 10, which would get a lot of work done, could turn into 20, 30, 40. Now, and you can decide who comes. So I think it would be good if you guys came up with it, brought it back for us to review. And I don't know if the board members have other thoughts about that, or?
I would just say maybe some of the community members could be parents as well.
Right, yes. So we would certainly help you, but we won't do it for you.
I think this is a great policy that needs to be enforced, especially in our schools after recent activities in our high school. Have seen a lot of negative aspects, has been going around in the last few weeks. Quinn, would you agree with me? Very negative around recently. And I think it'd be great to have community, put the community involved in this, too, because you don't just have the students throwing it at them, but you'll have community members knowing about this, and then everyone will accept it truly.
Great. And do you, do you think you can do it in a week? Or, no, I'm kidding. My suspicion is with meetings and getting people, it'll take two or three months. So it's maybe something we could look at in May. Would that be soon enough to get it in the handbook for the next year?
Yes.
Okay. So why don't you just plan that we'd hear back from you sometime in May, and you can let us know which meeting you'd prefer? Okay? Other comments?
Actually, I have a comment. Mike, you might know more about this, and I don't know if we, oh, Jim, you might know about this. Do we have any safeguards where you can like totally block some sites? I know, just, my daughter was telling me that in Grand Forks, where we used to live, there's, the city arena is very close to the school. And one of her friends was on one of the popular social media sites. And she was very close to the school. And she got a message that popped up that says, you cannot use this site. Do we have any of those sites that are blocked in our school? Will we, will that be part of this social kind of thing? Is that some, I mean, it should be separate from what they're doing. But is there any way that we can do that? Some of these sites are awful. And so can we, or where are we with that?
Okay, I can kind of vouch for this for what I know. But there's a new site, it's called Yik Yak. Yik Yak? And it's an anonymous site. And I don't have it, but I've seen it, and I've checked it out and deleted it off my phone after I saw it. But it's an anonymous site. And what it is, is that your band, it doesn't work in schools. You can't say names. So if you type a name in it, it erases it. And it says, in instructions, it says, no bullying, five times. So it's pretty much made, I mean, an anonymous site, you can't say names, and you can't use it in schools. I think it's something that's made for bullying. I think, I don't remember who I was talking to, but there was one town where they called the site Yik Yak, and they had it deleted from their town. So when you're on Yik Yak, when you drive through towns, it picks up each town's feed. And when you drive through this one town, it just blocks it all out. So I know there are ways to get it out of our town or however we want. But right now, it's out of our schools. But I've seen some horrible things on it. And it's, I don't know if you can trace it down or not, but.
So it is, it is actually blocked in our school?
We can block a variety of sites if we are given the addresses, okay? The problem is, they keep on coming up, and new ones are created. And, you know, unfortunately, we have experienced Yik Yak firsthand in my household in the last couple of weeks here. And absolutely, it is, it's, I see some bad stuff in other social media. Yik Yak is that much more worse. So yes, we can. We just need to have the, the ability to find it.
I do think, though, that's not the scope of this, so.
I just had a comment, too. I absolutely am supportive of us exploring and having our student board members take the lead in that. My caution, I guess, is I, I think we need to be careful about, I'm going to call it role creep of, you know, where does the role of parents end and the school role begin? And so that's one concern I have about how we go about exploring this concept. And another concern I have is just from a resource standpoint of when we put more guidelines in place, who's going to police that? And so that's just another caution and concern I have that do we open a gigantic can of worms here? That then major resources will need to be put towards policing that. Those are just a couple of comments.
Yeah, those are good points. So think of that while you're working.
I just want to see that outline of, is it Hayfield? If we can get that, okay.
All right, other comments about that? If not, section five, we need to move into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute, section 13D.03, for the purpose of labor negotiations. I need a motion to move into closed session.
So I'm moved.
And a second?
Second.
Dave, second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Pose same sign? Okay, we're in closed session, thanks.